80 project under my report. I wasn't able to attend the meeting due to some meetings with union negotiations, so
...town charter that the board of, you know, the council can give you something and take it back. Al, good show of faith, threw the 50,000 in there just to try to ease some of the pain. Al's not here one night, it's voted out. I don't understand why, I'm misinformed most times as you, I've admitted to you, but I mean, I felt that was really another slap in the face. So you've taken the 50,000 back, and on top of that, you've burdened the Board of Ed with more expenses for legal costs that will come out of the students. And I'm just venting because I just felt you didn't do a good job of representing our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what, Cliff, before you sit, Anthony, I want to address this.
Sure.
Yeah, because...
You know what, I want to, now you know I'm a straight shooter and I don't like it as. So here's, here's what, what happened. And the only reason I'm answering you, because normally it's a lot easier not to.
Well, okay.
The only reason I'm answering you is because this is going all over town and, and it needs to be corrected. So here's the deal. And I'm gonna put it in layman's terms.
Okay.
The teachers' contract that came to us gave them a 2.7% raise in the first year, a 2.7% raise in the second year, and a 3.5% raise in the third year. Sitting here as a council, or at least five of us thought that 3.5% in this environment was too much. So what we did was, the majority of the council sent it back and sent word to the Board of Ed, go after the third year. You're allowed to divide it. Go after the third year, the 3.5 is too much, see if we can get it down to 2.7. Now, there's not a person in this room who's getting a 10% raise over the next three years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But every one of them in this room is gonna pay for a 10% raise over the next three years. So as a council, we thought, you know what, we'll give them, we know that they had a hard zero a few years back, and looked at the information the attorney gave us, the 2.7 was about where the state was. 3.5 was higher than anything in the state. We sent the word, go after the 3.5 in the third year. Again, we know where I am with the Board of Ed and, you know, we don't see eye to eye. The Board of Ed and the Board Attorney was supposed to be working for the town. They chose two things, they did. If you read the state statutes, either party can ask for mediation. We sent word to the Board, let's sit down and talk. We got denied. By law, you're supposed to, either side asks.
Hmm.
What I read in the state statutes, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, he always does, said, if either side asks, you have to mediate. Unfortunately, the way the law is, or the only thing I could make sense of is, we weren't part of this. So we weren't allowed to ask for mediation. But we wanted to sit with the teachers and say, 2.7, 2.7, 2.7. Okay? So, the Board Attorney goes up there, doesn't listen to what we sent over to him, and goes for the North Branford hard-working taxpayers' ability to pay. And you know what? Because the people in town pay their taxes so well, and we collect so many taxes in town, and people go without vacations to pay their taxes, we lost because the arbitration board, hey, the North Branford people can pay.
In defense of you, Al, I watched it. You tried to slow the freight train that was running down the tracks out of, you tried to stop it. You said, hey, let's table it. You still were making an effort to stop it from going any further. There were other people on the Board, their minds were made up, or on the council, I mean, I...
Cliff, I hope you listened to what I just told you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, but even before...
I mean, that ma, it makes perfect sense what we were trying to do.
Yeah, but there was still a chance to avoid the arbitration by having a meeting.
But if you talked to any other Board of Ed in another district...
Okay.
By all accounts...
Okay.
We would've won the third year if we just went after the third year.
Okay.
And the Board and the Board Attorney chose not to do what we asked. And that's their prerogative.
Even though we asked for that, we did ask them to specifically go after the third year.
But, but again, you know, and I'm, I'm right on the fence, because you had advice from John. John does this all the time. It wasn't the way to go. It was to not vote that day. And I watched you on YouTube from Daytona 500 parking lot, so I, I saw what you did. I wasn't here. But again, John was trying to explain to you, you still have one more, a couple days, there were a couple Board of Ed members here that were willing to try to work with you, and unfortunately, you...
Well, five of us disagreed with John then, because we thought that we, we thought, we all felt, at least five of us felt that we owed it to the citizens in the town of North Branford to try to go after that third year.
You know, and I, this is not a personal attack on, this is nothing against any of you personally, it's just procedure. I have a problem with the procedure. Because you worked so hard, you went through the budget, and nickel-and-dimed and, and did so well on that part, but then these other things backfired.
I don't think we did that well. So, all right, we do have to move on, but...
Yeah.
Speaking of procedure...
Yeah.
We followed the procedure, that's state law.
Right, and you have to.
They said, if you guys think it's too much, you can go to arbitration.
Okay.
Okay? So we followed procedure.
All right. I mean, again, but hindsight's a wonderful thing.
And if we could've been running it, we would've won the third year. The ability to pay, we lost.
But, but that's, yeah, and that's where John...
Because the people here can now go without vacations two years to pay for the 10% raise.
And again, the grand list is something you should be nervous about, again. But again, it, you gotta have good schools to attract good people to a town that make good money. I don't know, it's a, there's not a win here. I do thank you for all your service you guys give, but sometimes I feel that things could be handled different. And probably the gentleman that upset me the most is not here tonight, and I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment as a public...
Sure.
...intentional here? I wrote a letter to the editor of the New Haven Register because we had not received any news from the Register. We didn't have a reporter for many, many months. I did receive a telephone call from the editor, said he would look into it. I received a call and said they would hire, they were hiring two additional reporters, and they would then cover our town. Unfortunately, the editor chose himself to come to Town Hall to talk to folks, to get some information, and felt he was rebuffed, he was not welcomed, and he was very concerned, and called me back. I did get a call from a reporter who I, and I pass it on to you, but I hope that we would get news. I mean, when I see we have a budget referendum, there was never an article in the paper about the budget, there was never an article about the referendum. Consequently, we get 3% of the public voting. I think it's sad that North Branford is not represented in the Register, and I just want to express my concern that I think we should welcome the opportunity to, to be heard and get news about the town.
I agree. Thank you, Congress. Okay. Item seven, resignations and appointments.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda? I would like to add on item 7C.
7C.
Appointment to the Park Recreation Commission.
Reappointment.
Reappointment, I'm sorry.
Add the person?
Do I add the person at this time, or I have to...
You can add it now.
Victor Palma, to a term that would expire on 12/31/16.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fawnin, to add item C, a reappointment to Park Rec, Victor Palma, term 12/31/16. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Okay. Item A.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm kinda concerned about someone from the police, going on the Police Commission, because he's working for, he's a deputy sheriff. And it's my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, but it's my opinion that it's a clear conflict of interest, and I would like to have the attorney give us a, an opinion on that as soon as possible. John?
Okay.
And we have to vote on this. If that's not, I'll make a motion that we send it to the town attorney to vote on it, to rule on it.
To rule on, on what now?
On the, if you can run, be on the Police Commission as a law-abiding deputy sheriff.
Well, in the past, we've had, had that happen. I think she's asking for a marshal.
I still think...
Can you sit on the...
I don't think there's anything prohibiting that in a charter, because it's not an office of the town. There is such a thing as a conflict of offices, where someone could be serving two offices. I think a conflict that, an alternate person, one from which you're referring to, is more of a, perhaps an ethical conflict, or a conflict whereby a deputy sheriff's orientation may be more inclined one way or the other, as opposed to someone who's coming to the position in a neutral way. I don't know, I don't think, but I'll be happy to review my charter, that there is a, that since the town charter does not have a conflict of your office, or your job and the town office, that that would make a, an issue, be a problem. Unless the town marshal is, unless the marshal is earning fees from the town somehow in conflict with serving on the Police Commission, and I don't think that's the case either. I think that goes to the vote.
I'd like to just make a couple of, what I hope are minor points on, on the question that's presented. First and foremost, marshals, or deputy marshals in the state of Connecticut, are really taxed with civil process, summonses, subpoenas, things of that nature. They are not law enforcement officials as we think of the Police Department. So I'm not really sure that there is any inherent conflict of interest. I do understand that we've had, in the past, people that have been working as, excuse me, as deputy marshals or deputy sheriffs before the Marshals Commission was, was created. And it was questions as to the propriety of having them serve on the Police Commission. I don't know if those concerns really derive from the personalities involved, or their actual professional responsibilities. I don't see any inherent conflict between the duties of a marshal and a citizen serving on the Police Commission. More importantly, I don't think we've ever denied any citizen the opportunity to serve on any border commission in town because of their professional affiliation. We've had town employees serve on this council, we still have town employees on this council. I, I just don't think that a person's professional engagement should in any way jeopardize what service they're prepared to volunteer to the town. Secondly, I think it's important to recognize what we're talking about here is not an appointment to a full term. It's to complete the term of a commissioner who resigned because he moved out of town. What we're dealing with is an appointment which goes to 12/31/14. So if in fact, there is any malfeasance, misfeasance, or question by the commissioner's service, we're talking about a period that runs approximately six months, and we'd be in a position to correct our oversight by replacing that commissioner. So I just don't see this as that much of an issue, that it should in any way jeopardize a person's ability to put themselves forward and be voted on fairly by this commission. If they're voted down, so be it. But their job should not be the basis on which they are denied the opportunity to serve the town, particularly in view of the difficulty we have finding people to step up for town service.
I made a motion, I don't want anybody seconding or not to have an opinion from town.
To, to give us some opinion right now, is that what you're asking for?
I don't know if he has it...
I guess. I mean, did you give it? Well, you know what, I'll second the motion, we'll vote on it, and he can give us an opinion. I'll second the motion.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Upstate.
Counselor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
As far as the specific question as to whether there is a conflict of, of offices, and again, we're only speaking of the town charter. The town charter talks about town offices.
Point of order for the...
It was four to one, four to one. Counselor Fucy didn't vote.
They didn't ask.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was my fault.
Although, yes. So, continue.
I apologize.
Okay. The conflict of offices that the town charter refers to is someone occupying two offices in the town. The, the position of being a state marshal, as its name implies, if anything, the position is an employee, or the occupant is an employee of the state. He receives his authority, or derives his authority from the state, not the town. So on the basis of that, I don't think that the charter would prohibit the appointment of a person who happens to be a state marshal to the Police Commission. And however, that may be a factor in some people's minds on the Town Council as to whether or not it's a, it's a good choice in your deliberations, but certainly, in my view, there's, there's no exclusionary provision in the charter that would prevent a state marshal from being appointed or seeking the office of a member of the Police Commission. Of course, my opinions often get rejected, so... As you have heard, yeah.
All right, so, going back to item A, appointment of Andrew Esposito to the Police Commission, term to expire 12/31/2014.
So just on a point of order, if we, so he's sitting here on the council now, and he can't serve on the Police Commission now, so should there be language in there that says he's gonna step down from here or something? Well, the town clerk, now, if I, I don't know if I can answer to it, the town clerk had instructed me what to do if the appointment was made. I have a letter, a DM out of council, and then to, yeah, to midnight tonight, and then to the town... So then, so then this should read that we're appointing you as of midnight tonight?
Conditional upon his resignation.
Conditional around, upon your resignation from the Town Council.
I presume that B is the corollary to this? Is it, there's a...
Yes, yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion, that Andrew Esposito be appointed to the Police Commission conditional upon his resignation from the Town Council, and the appointment be effective at midnight tonight, may, well, be May 21st midnight, for a term expiring 12/31/14.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Upstate.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Upstate.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, appointment, Eric Hodgkins to WPCA Town Council, term to expire 11/11/2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
No.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, Park Rec appointment, or reappointment of Victor Palma, term to expire 12/31/16.
So moved?
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
I have a question before we vote. It does, I know this, they haven't had a quorum quite a bit on that committee, is this one of the people who doesn't go to the meetings? Do we have an attendance of, you know, I don't want to...
Rose asked Mike to look, did Rose ask you to look into that?
Any attendance?
Ah, the dates, but I did not go deep into, in terms of attendance, I just, the question was how many cancellations, so that's what I, what I got, I don't have attendance on that.
Well, how many meetings were postponed because of the lack of a quorum?
Six.
Since, we have a memo.
Since July, it's in the, it's in a memo here.
Can we ask for, can we ask for a report on the attendance of all the commissioners?
Certainly.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable, yeah. So we want to table this vote until we find out?
I'll move to table until we find out.
Well, we second the table then? I'll second the vote.
Yeah, but I still have another motion that we didn't, you have to rescind that motion.
Yeah, we'll have to withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
I made it, so I withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
So I need a roll call. Roll call.
On the withdrawal?
On the withdrawal.
Okay.
Oh, oh, that's the C.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right, now I have a motion, I believe by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond to table this.
I'm...
Or, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Wentworth made the motion to table, and Counselor Fucy seconded. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item A, unfinished business discussion in action. Updates to the defined benefit plan, documents, police union, this is still tabled. The ZEO position, report, and job description.
Right, the council at the last meeting had asked for additional information, did not want to proceed until you had opportunity to take a look at what those duties and responsibilities are. So that is in your packet under the memo of 8B. At the end of the packet, the primary duties of the ZEO, tried to outline there what that person had been working on, and there's even a few other cases that I hadn't put in that memo, but it's, it's a busy position in terms, given the eight hours a week that they're, they're working, given the caseload and number of items that are out there. Some of you are familiar with, that we've discussed over and over, some of these things that, that they get resolved, quote unquote, resolved, in terms of they're quiet, they're cleaned up, and then the problem comes back. So it's, it's a, sort of a circle, if you will, it comes back, and they have to go, go out and revisit and send out letters, investigation, and so forth. So some of these you see on that list are reoccurring. You know, looking at it, talking with staff, I also looked at the, the job description and just tweaked that a little, one, one line in that, in terms of that job description. But as, as I said last meeting, I, I think it would be important to, to look at moving forward, and I said that we had to identify an individual I'd like to talk with that I think would be a good fit, is a local resident, potentially, but I'd like to get at least the process going with advertising and finding out if, if that person is, is available and was willing to do it. So I'm here to answer any, any other questions you may have about this, and maybe what I should tell you is, on the, on the process, it has to go through you, I, I'm sure you're aware, it has to go through you in terms of approval of the job description, and the only change in there is, in item, under the job description, is just the technology improvements, as you know, that we've gone to online computer-based permitting. And, you know, so just all that was an additional language change of item eight, ability to learn, online computer-based permitting system, ability to learn. So, it's just bringing it up to date with what we currently have, these haven't been done in, in quite some time, so that was the minor change in the job description.
How many hours a week was this?
Currently, it's eight. Two, two days a week, split up, it was four, four hours on Tuesday, four hours on Wednesday. And it is, it is in the budget, it went through the process, so the, the item there is budgeted, and I think your recommendation also was, if it was going to be enough, I would recommend, you know, upon looking at this, that it is probably a 12 to 15 hours a week, easily, I think. I mean, I know that question came up, whether or not aid was, was going to be enough to cover all of the caseload that's out there, and that may be negotiable, depending on what we find in terms of the applicant pool, and who's qualified, who holds certifications from the state, in order to effectively carry out the, the job duties.
Could we just jump back to item A, just for a second? The updates on the defined benefits plan.
Anthony, so this is the police pension?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that runs, when, when is it, when is it open for discussion?
Next fiscal year.
July 1, 15?
Right.
So as of July 1, 15, it ends?
Correct.
Okay, so, we would want to start...
Well, it's open for negotiation, doesn't end, it's open for negotiation.
Right, but we would have to, we're not gonna want to prolong it any longer than July. So, so we need to, I guess, between you and Michael, we need to set up, you know, we need to start talking about this, because we know how long it takes to negotiate with strong unions, so I see this has been postponed since 2012, and, you know, I'm not gonna waste my time and sit here and just see this thing being postponed all the time, you know? So we need to start the discussion with them sooner than later, I would think. Any reason why we can't?
No. The, the history on, the reason why it's on your agenda is, going back about four years ago, we had not updated our pension plans, there had been negotiated changes, and the police plan was updated, but the town employee plan and the fire plan were not updated. So we hired an attorney to go through, we hired the actuary first, to bring all the changes that were negotiated, to codify them all. Once we had that document sent it to an attorney who specializes in pensions, we said, okay, go through the pension plans for any legislative changes that have occurred, since they were written up last. Now, in the case of the police plan, it was written up in 2004, when it was negotiated last. The town plan and the fire plan were not. What he did was, he overstepped his bounds. He went through and made substantive changes that were not legislative, required changes. So what happened was, the police union said, wait, we haven't negotiated those, and that's what put that on a hold pattern.
Okay.
So what was supposed to happen was, he was supposed to, the 2004 document, bring it up to date, any legislative changes, he made substantive changes, the police union said it's not a good thing, we agreed, and why it keeps sitting on here is, we're looking for some language from them now to say, okay, we'll accept the 2004 document as it is, and the concern is if we don't adopt the legislative changes, and it loses the jeopardy of the taxation of the plan. So we want to make sure that we're catching all the legislative required changes in the documents that aren't there, and, so it's kind of like in limbo, where who's gonna do it? Is it the Board Attorney, or the Police Union Attorney, they have somebody specializing in pension, looking at it. I'm not going back to the same person again, because obviously he messed up the first engagement we had with him. So that's why it's going on. So the, the initial concept was just to take a letter from them saying, okay, the 2004 document lives as it is, no changes, but the caveat, if anything did change legislatively, that they're on the hook for, and they're reluctant to do that until we get all the people in the same room to talk about it.
Thank you, Anthony. If no one objects on the council, I'd like to move item G, the AT&amp;T SmartLink request for a cell tower, up. We have all these people here this evening waiting, and I just thought it would be beneficial. Is that okay?
We're gonna go back to B, is that what you want?
Yeah.
We're gonna skip to G.
We'll go back. Before we begin, I have some letters that were written, and I'd like to read some of these and enter them into record. This letter is from Joseph and Colleen Sierra, 16 Bitter Street Drive, written to myself and the Town Council regarding item 13B. Dear Mayor Anthony Candelora and Town Council Board Members, we are writing in regard to notification from the Town Council, from the town of North Branford regarding an inquiry from SmartLink on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility, indicating interest in town property known as 12 Bitter Street Drive, North Branford, for the purpose of erecting a cell... For the purpose of erecting a cell, full tower. We would like this letter to be read in its entirety into the record at the town council meeting on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen. We purchased our home at sixteen Bitter Street Drive in July two thousand twelve, after looking at over one hundred other properties. We were looking for a home and property large enough to accommodate a blended family. Our aim was to help our soon-to-be divorced daughter, who was changing careers, studying for a nursing degree. The plan was for her, her seven-year-old son, and four-year-old daughter to live with us until she got her degree and was employed in her chosen field. We immediately fell in love with this property, large enough for everyone to have their own space. What sealed the deal was the outdoor space. Bets were taken about how long it would take my Yankee-loving grandson to be able to reach the woods surrounding woods where land trust owned. Let us to pay a little more than we otherwise might have, and we closed. We hold the Sofias blameless, because they were sure they thought that to be the case. This was land trust owned. The purpose of this letter is to be respectfully voiced our extreme opposition to any use of the property in question. Other than open space, while we fully understand the incentives for a landowner to entertain these types of inquiries, we feel this would not be in the best interest of us, our neighbors, or the town. While we certainly hope it does not come to it, we are prepared to vigorously take all legal measures to try to ensure no tower is erected in this residential area. We also plan to engage our immediate neighbors and community at large in opposition to any such plan. The property abuts property owned by the North Branford Land Trust and a preserve that extends to Guilford, making it totally inappropriate for the use of, contemplated by AT&T. To do anything but leave as is would destroy the view and the scenic nature of the area. The property is also the site of multiple streams, brooks, and drainage culverts, the disruption of which we feel would be detrimental during the many frequent heavy rains we have experienced in the short time we have lived here. We would also like to respectfully implore the council to investigate alternatives to the disrupting this beautiful trifle open space. There is much scenic evidence of the serious harmful effects of microwave emissions through cell towers, especially to children in the beginning. Our due diligence, we were astonished to learn that the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six precludes municipalities from denying tower applications based on harmful effects of emissions, so long as emissions are within FCC guidelines. Therefore, we appeal to the council to consider the aesthetic, environmental, and quality of life aspects. Sincerely, Joseph and Colleen Sierra. I have another letter from the North Branford Land Conservation Trust that was also to like to be read. This letter is in response to your letter we received dated May seventh concerning inquiry from SmartLink about the possibility of installing a cell tower on a town-owned parcel known as twelve Bitter Street Drive. The deed to this parcel clearly designate as a public area. The parcel is the open space set aside required when the subdivision was approved in nineteen sixty-seven. The town did not have a land trust at this time, otherwise, as it currently occurs, we likely would have been offered this parcel. The purpose of the open space set aside is generally for passive recreational use by the public. We feel it would violate the right to the townspeople and the intention of the set aside to use all or part of this parcel for the private or commercial use. We received your letter because we own an abundant parcel consisting of twenty-four point five acres, this part of the William Dudley Preserve that extends into Guilford. We purchased this land as a joint venture with the town of Guilford to preserve this land in its natural state. A commercial enterprise on the parcel in question has the potential to adversely affect this hundred-plus acre preserve. At the very least, by limiting public access to it. While we understand the necessity for cellphone coverage in our age, and we understand the town council's desire to generate income, we feel a tower is ill-suited for this parcel. We strongly urge that all other bedded suited locations be considered and exhausted before contemplating this location for any type of private or commercial use. Thank you for your time and consideration, sincerely David Sargent, President, North Branford Land Conservation Trust. There are several letters here that are very similar in nature, so I, I'm not going to read all of them, but I will give them to the town manager.
Could I, could I suggest one thing that, I don't want to do anything to cut off anybody's right to express their opinion, but could we do two things? One, poll the audience to determine if there is any member of the public that would actually be in favor of this proposal? And secondly, do a straw poll of ourselves, is anyone here prepared to vote in favor of this list? Because I think we're going to spend a lot of time vilifying AT&T, and at the end of the night, I suspect, though I don't know, this is going nowhere.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can only speak for myself, but I would not be in favor of an residential building.
Well, maybe there's somebody out there who is in favor of it, and I don't want to.
Well, I would like to ask if there was anyone that would like to speak on behalf, that has interest in the cell tower.
Good evening. With respect to the proposed cell tower on Bittersweet.
Could you state your name, I'm sorry.
Sorry. My name is William Seward, live at thirty-two Metal Brook Drive, North Branford. I'm also the fire chief for this community. With regards to the proposed cell tower site on Bittersweet, my comments are as follow. It's predicated upon not only the dedicated use of the cellphone tower for cellphone, private and public cellphone service, but also enhancing public safety communications over the town of North Branford. I would strongly be in favor of the installation of the cell town, cellphone tower if, and only if, a caveat would be put by the town on the installation of this asset. If, number one, the corporation that's installing the site would put Fire, Police, and Public Works Communication System on-site, on the tower, and provide a satellite link between that tower and our primary transmission tower on Parson Negro Road as part of Ochinkowski's construction site. It would improve communications for all three services in the northern part of the town. As this town council knows, we enhanced our communication system over the last couple of years through a federal grant. However, there are still dead spots in reception of service in that area. It's critical to those agencies in responding to calls in that area of the town that messages be, be transmitted and received effectively. Without that in place, the residents would not be provided with appropriate and timely service due to the lack of communication in that area. Most importantly, the Connecticut, Connecticut Siting Council requires on new installation of cellphone towers, space be provided for public safety free of charge. Most importantly, it improves the level of public safety for the town, and I know this town council has predicated its objectives and strategy in improving public safety. I'll reiterate that my support for the cellphone tower site installation would be based upon this town council requiring the installer to put communication systems appropriate for this town on-site. And without that ability, I would not be in favor of cellphone site install. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Please. Please, can I, can I, I have a couple of comments, if you'd like to get up and speak, you can get up and speak, your name, please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Joe Sarah, this is my first letter, I live at sixteen Bitter Sweet, excuse me, first and foremost, I'm only two, two years in your town, and I understand you folks' voluntary services, so for that, we thank you. We're against it, I mean, there's no, two ways to get, we didn't buy a property. If I bought a house near an airport, I couldn't complain about the noise of a jet. I bought a house in the middle of the woods, I do not expect to see a cellphone tower there for a lot of reasons. The, the detrimental effects of microwave to the kids. My only complaint should be worried about that woodpecker that drives me nuts every day. That's, that's the only thing I want to worry about, I got a lot of nice people here that agree with me, especially some new friends from Guilford. With respect to the fire department, nobody can say that they don't deserve to have good communications and for the safety of the town, but I would implore you to look for alternative, maybe in a commercial area, or something that's not in the middle of the woods. But again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Just so we're clear, the council did not pick or choose.
No, I, I understand, I'm asking you not to interfere at all.
Mayor Candelora, the council, my name is Jack McCoy, I live in twenty-eight Masswood Drive, it is two streets away from this site. I should say first that I am for improving communications in our community. I mean, communities grow with cell towers and, and all that sort of thing, and I'm in the IT business, and I know the value of that. But what I'm here to do is, is call your attention to a factual error. I received a letter that says, your property is located in an area with insufficient reliable wireless coverage. This is my property. Now, I, I took my trusty iPad, and I drove to that location, and I have an AT&T subscription. I have three bars of the five was the coverage at that location. So in the location of the proposed tower, I think there's fairly good coverage, and someone might want to check that. Secondly, and more important, outside of this facility, I had one bar. Okay? This is the commercial artery of our city, or of our town. So I think maybe there's some leverage from the council that you may take advantage of by suggesting that the tower go on the water property company, property, or across the street over, you know, where there's commercial activity. That's where we need business coverage and the kind of communication that this represents.
Hi, I'm Linda Kwachka, and I live at thirty-six Feather Lane in Guilford. So I just wanted to come to represent the people of Guilford that would be affected should this tower go up. And all for the same reasons. We, there's a bunch of us that, that showed up today, not North Branford residents, but Guilford residents, that would be affected if this goes up. And I bought my house, paid a lot of money for my house, to live in the woods. And I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. When, when the firemen spoke, all I can now vision is a huge tower and a flashing red light, sort of blinking in my house, making, even scaring me, even more so than before I came. I have great service where I am. I have AT&T, I've never experienced any problems with service. So again, as, I just wanted to come to say, as a, not a North Branford resident, but as a Guilford resident, that, that would be affected. I was nice enough to be sort of informed about this from, from somebody from town, and I'm glad they did, because I would have not known. So on behalf of Feather Lane and the residents that live there, we are, we are against you sort of putting this thing on, on land trust property, and, and again, what everybody else said, we're just, we don't want it. We came all the, all the way from Guilford to let you know that we do not want it either, so thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue, is there anyone else in favor of it at all, in the room? All right, I mean, before we continue, I think I'm going to ask the council if they would call a vote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we vote to, you know, send it back where it came from. I mean, we didn't ask for it to be here, we, at the last meeting, we said, send letters to the, to you people to let you know about it, and, you know, so, you know.
Just as a matter of clarification, we, we don't want to have a motion to send it back where it came from, we want to have a motion.
To deny building a cell tower on that property.
Going with any lease of, of the town property, a twelve bitter street drive.
And, and with my motion, I'd, I'd like to just address the chief that, you know, I have the utmost respect for you, I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, there are holes in, in cell tower service, and, you know, I live it every day, I build multimillion-dollar houses along the shoreline, and I normally have to drive up to Route One, whether I'm here or in Stonington, to get cell service, so there's a lot of holes in, in it, and, you know, I don't think we can put it on the residents', or I don't support putting it up in there in that residential neighborhood. Do we have a second?
I have. Moved by Counselor Rose. Seconded by Counselor Fucy, and before we vote, is there anyone that would really like to speak? I mean, I, we can go on all night. I'll let you, go ahead.
My name is Deanna Kluk, I live at fifty-five Briarwood Drive, and the tower would be in my backyard, well, not in my backyard, right behind me, my backyard. Safety is very important, it really is, and any communication to make your job easier, I think is wonderful. I just, there's safety about children, there's safety about all the adult ones that are here, radiation, it's, it's a fact. Problem is, is right now, five years ago, we didn't all have cellphones and tablets and wifi in our homes, and my sons, they have iPads at school with wifi, so they're constantly being bombarded by this, and we don't know the long-term effects. So now you're possibly going to put a, yeah, I know you're not, but AT&T wants to put a tower in my backyard, when we don't know what this is going to happen, and, you know, you were saying, improving public safety, well, that's not improving public safety, and that's, I just want to say that and submit my letter.
Evening Mayor Frank Proto, fifty-seven Briarwood Drive, the tower would be in my backyard, okay? I'm not in favor of it, I just wanted to go on the record. I have the land trust next to me, I've got the town lot behind me, I didn't realize that it was a town lot until I went to go do some searching a couple of years ago, I've only been a resident for two and a half years. I bought in that specific spot, when the house was shown to me, from the estate of Rose Galicchio, and her family is sitting behind me, and fell in love with the place. If there was a cellphone tower there at the time, two and a half years ago, I don't think I would have bought the house. So I think it would detrimentally affect the value that the Galicchio family got when they sold their mom's house. And anybody else that's in our neighborhood, if this cellphone tower goes up, not only is it going to be an eyesore, or whatever the concerns of the radiation, or the microwaves, or whatever that happens to be or not be, but somewhere along the line, we're going to pay for this, if it happens, because I'm not going to get my money back when I go to sell my house, or to go refinance it or something, so, definitely not in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Malicki, I live at nine Butternut Road. There are several of us over here who purchased our houses when they were built. We moved in in sixty-eight. We were promised at that time that that piece of property would be a park for our children to play in. What happened? It's beautiful. We have deer, we have coyotes. But it is beautiful, I walk my dog every single day in the woods, and it's beautiful. It would be a sin to put that tower, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
I call a question.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes. Before we go on, Kurt, I know, where's Kurt? Wow, you lost your seat. I know we talked about this at the last meeting, and, you know, it would appear that, that, that the boundary line.
the boundary line goes right through that house. So, I know that these overlays are not accurate, but where is the boundary line on that, on that property?
Okay, basically though.
I mean, is there, so first of all, is there an ASBIL found that house that?
Probably not even an ASBIL. What those are basically is the assessment map and they fit an aerial photograph, the information they obtained from the aerial photograph. It's a best fit and that's what towns do and it's not based upon a survey. Towns like maybe Greenwich or somebody do it based upon an actual A2 survey and then do an accurate fit, but it, they're spending millions of dollars. We spent thousands of dollars to get a pretty good representation with that caveat that it's, in some cases, it might be a little off. And in that case, I'm sure that property is within the property line. It just, it's sort of like a, a rubber band. They fit it to, as best they can, the road geometry and the like. So, like I said, it's pretty good, but it's not 100% accurate throughout town.
Would we still have that subdivision map from?
We'd have, subdivision map would be filed.
And it shows that?
Definitely. Would show, would show the property, but it may not do, it's not going to show the house generally. Those ASBILs, I mean, there weren't ASBILs when most of those houses were built. So, that's, the lot shape should be pretty much correct. It's where the house is, more or less, could be off a little bit on the lot.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming this evening. We voted not to go forward with the sub power. Yeah.
Could I email my?
There really is one bar out here and three bottles up there.
Sure, I'll move into town.
Hi, Jack. Can I email my?
I kept trying to call him.
I know. We didn't want this.
I don't know.
All right.
Well, it's a town-owned land. That's why it came.
I guess we can go to item C.
Secretary.
What happened to?
Yeah, the CEO.
We didn't vote on it.
The CEO position, I'm sorry. So, we got a vote on that.
I'll move to accept the job description for the CEO.
I'll second the job description.
All right. Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Fucie to accept. Item B, the CEO.
What'd we move?
The CEO position.
We moved to adopt the job description.
Job description.
Okay.
Hey, Wes, do you have any questions on?
Nope.
Okay.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, secretary, I guess one, job description.
And just to clarify, we're, we're okay with moving to advertise, to negotiate, to talk and, and move this to fill that position?
That's what we voted on.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's yours from there, Mike.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. D, town council, fire and police commissions. I believe we carried this over.
What are we going to do, secretary?
We're going to do secretary.
Oh, yeah, we got a vote on secretary?
Yeah, same thing here as well. His job description was tweaked.
Well, has it changed from when it was adopted and revised in 1998?
It has not changed since 1998.
So, then it's effective. We don't have to do anything with it.
No, you don't have to. No, I'm, I'm recommending some, some changes in terms of, I just, when I went through it, again, I went through this one. There was some repetitive.
So, you did make one and you did revise it?
You did revise it.
Uh, no, no, that is, that is pending, that is pending this council. Council has to do, it's just, it's there as, that's what it would appear if you approve it, it would be approved tonight. It's just anticipation that you would approve it, but it hasn't been revised yet. This is what I'm proposing because they, what I found were there were repeats.
The changes are the italics?
Uh, yes.
I'll move to approve the job description for secretary one.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item D, the town council, fire and police commissions.
This has been brought back.
There is a commission, but it's, there are vacancies on it and I think it would be a very good commission if we could revive it and it would help communications between, I think, the fire, police, dispatchers and other.
Ethics committee?
No. The, years ago, they had, right, Anthony Fire.
Right. There was a subcommittee, there was an emergency communications subcommittee that was charged with looking at long-term situations regarding emergency communications. It involved police commission, police chief, fire commission, fire chief, members of the council, town manager, and its goal was to look at long-term communications issues in the town. That's something you're referring to.
Right.
I think that's different than what Alan brought up last time though.
Right.
Yeah, it's two, two different topics, but you're right. That goal we talked about a couple of meetings ago was to revitalize that emergency communications committee that was in like the 70s and 80s.
Right. Because I think it would help, you know, at times, there may be a situation where, you know, the fire may, you know, a call, something happened. I don't want to point fingers or say anything wrong, but, you know, there, there are open lines of communication with dispatch, with the fire department, with the police department so they can, you know, make it better, you know, whenever there's, you know, room for improvement. And that committee, I think, would be important. I mean, just a few meetings we had, you know, Commissioner Civitello, Commissioner Triano, they were helpful. And I think, you know, even if they met, I don't know.
Last year.
Whatever, yeah. Or even called a meeting when it was necessary. But, you know, we should start thinking about getting a few members, I think, on it from each board.
Can we get, I think, you know, we asked John for a legal opinion. I think that's, can we get that? Can we get his answer on that?
Sure.
Now, if he's ready to answer it. Oh, yeah, there you go. I thought you wanted me to read it.
No, that's, now, I looked into, there's been some talk or some, some concern or interest in the question of whether or not the town council or through the town council, the town manager could, under state law, be substituted for either the police commission or the fire commission. And both of these commissions owe their existence and authority to the legislature. They have no inherent right to exist other than that which has been bestowed upon them through state law or in some cities by special act. We're not one of those cities. The long and the short of it is, and I made this a very short opinion, is that with regard to the fire commission, state law does provide that the fire department can be controlled and managed in the way that our ordinances say it shall be by a fire commission or town council. So, in the case of the fire commission, if the town council were otherwise disposed, it could be and serve as the fire commission itself. However, with regard to the police commission, it's a different story. The police commission does not have that language in the statute. It provides for a, a police commission. We provide for both a police commission and a fire commission in our charter and both statutes, state statutes, provide that we can pass ordinances. But unlike the fire commission, there's no inherent right for any other town officer or town council to assert themselves in the stead of the police commission. There, I did go back with the assistance of town clerk Lisa Valenti to what we had before we passed the charter because in the prefatory language of the charter and by state law, when we went to this form of government, we were permitted to continue any laws that we had passed under the Board of Selectment jurisdiction. And the, the origin of the police commission occurred in 1969. These are the minutes from the Board of Selectment meeting in June, on June 17th of 1969. And I was looking to see if there were some special laws that we had in North Branford that were continued into the most recent Town of North Branford code. And this would be the occasion where that would happen. But instead, as you will read, particularly in sections one, eight and nine, it specifically references the authority of the police commission to be derived from the state statutes. So, once again, the only power that anyone has in town with respect to the police commission is that which is set forth in the state statute. The state statute would not comprehend any other town officer or entity taking over as the police commission, compromising the powers and duties or terminating the police commission in its entirety. So, that's my opinion. There is not, there's nothing that, there's nothing that can be done legislatively by this body to affect the existence of the police commission as we now know it. That's not the case with the fire commission. What that means is that when we make appointments to these commissions, we should do so with that in mind. And, and with, as a deliberative body, we should take advantage of that time and patience and make sure that we occupy these very important boards and commissions with the highest quality candidates that are available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, getting back to your committees, the, the, the two of them, yeah, I think that's a good idea, figure that out and set it up.
Yeah. I mean, if there was a committee, we can go up, we can go up as far as size and people that are on it. I don't think any of the people that are on it presently are available, but maybe we should start with that. You know, we could send maybe a memo to each commission and they could choose members or, because Alan would say, the council has to create the committee, I believe.
So, we had a committee, but it disbanded? Was it still out there, just not meeting?
No.
There's a town emergency committee that wasn't there?
It was, it called the emergency communications. I provided the minutes.
Right.
I know that. But don't you have a committee now? You have an emergency?
No. There was a brief subcommittee when we looked at the CEMED situation. There was a subcommittee that was formed at that point, but this other committee goes back to the 70s and 80s, the emergency communication. We looked at long-term. It was when we went from a, a single dispatch point to a multi-point, changing frequencies from a low band to a high band. It was around, it was around the late 80s that they met last.
Can we find out from Lisa how many were on the committee and what departments were on it?
Yeah, I provided the minutes to you guys previously. It was a motion when it was created.
I must have missed this.
It goes back a couple of meetings. I'm not sure when.
Yeah, it's like two or three meetings back.
Yeah. It goes back to when Barbara Bizaki was on the council. She created the motion to, to establish it, so it goes back quite a few years.
All right. So, we'll get that, we'll get that together and start. Okay. Item E, proposed tax collection policy draft.
This is a continuation of our discussion from the last meeting where we had looked to initiate a new step in our tax collection process and that would be to engage a collection agency to, after the marshal's warrants expire after the 60 days. Currently, we let them basically lapse and people will pay when they have to renew a car registration, things like that. We wanted to implement another step of a collection agency. Ken and I talked last meeting with you folks about a firm that we would like to bring before you and that firm is here tonight to address any questions and talk about themselves, their strategy and tactics and any concerns you folks may have. So, I'd like to bring Art and Ken, the tax collector, up to talk about it.
Hi, I'm Heidi Nohabett from American National Recovery Group.
Art Gilbert from West Haven, Connecticut, employee in sales and marketing for American National Recovery Group. And first of all, I feel like a comedian that told a joke and just totally lost the crowd, but I've been, I was on a city council in West Haven, so I feel your pain. We've been in the business for several years. I used to be the tax collector in West Haven up until 2013, at which time after that, I went to work for American National Recovery. They know tax laws. They're very easy to work with. We have approximately 35 towns in the state and the last page of the brochures that I gave you is some, a list of the towns, there's some of the towns that are in your area. We also do, one of, one of the bigger points about this whole program that we do, once you do it, you don't really have to worry about doing it again because hopefully we're going to find everybody that we possibly can. You're going to find, like, for instance, up in Groton in New London, when we first did it up there, the normal response is about 15 to 20% on, on a first mailing. Up there, it was over 45% and the reason being, we found a lot of stuff that was uncollectible to, to military activity and service. So, it was a twofold part for both the collector and the assessor. They were able to remove a lot of items that they were never going to collect that were in suspense, that they weren't going to collect to begin with. But it's stuff that we can go after, it's collectible, it's out there. We do the best that we can. We continue to skip trace. There is no cost. We also do... One of the bigger points about this whole program that we do, once you do it, you don't really have to worry about doing it again because hopefully, we're going to find everybody that we possibly can. You're going to find, like, for instance, up in Groton in New London, when we first did it up there, the normal response is about 15 to 20 percent on a first mailing. Up there, it was over 45 percent. And the reason being, we found a lot of stuff that was uncollectible due to military activity and service. So, it was a twofold part for both the collector and the assessor. They were able to remove a lot of items that they were never going to collect that were in suspense, that they weren't going to collect to begin with. But it's stuff that we can go after. It's collectible. It's out there. We do the best that we can. We continue to skip trace. There is no cost to the town whatsoever. The only cost incurred is by us, by doing the mailings, and until we collect. We continue to work those accounts. Once we collect, you get paid.
What is your fee when you do collect?
The state statute is 15 percent. The taxpayer pays about 10. I'd say 90 percent. And I have seen some of the numbers of capacity receivables. We do an excellent job in town, much better than a lot of the other towns, but work hard. But about 80 to 90 percent of them do not live in the state anymore. So, there's people that have gone to New York or other places that did not realize that they had to return the tax or were driving on their state connected tax without two years. Chances are, they might owe two years of receivables, and one year will be removed by the tax assessor. So, with... We will be able to clean up the books as we're going forward. And I think you have had present 15 years that would be available for collections right now.
You've got a pretty thankless job. Are we going to get any complaints that people are getting called at 2:00 a.m.? Or are they being confronted at their job? Is that not part of your collection activity?
That we'll be calling anybody at 2:00 in the morning? No.
Anything that would be considered abusive by a taxpayer?
No.
That is going to come back to us to haunt us?
No.
Anytime you treat anybody in the wrong manner, you're never going to... You won't get any results. So, that's pretty much it. I mean, if you treat them nice, you'll get results.
You're the supplier of the joint taxes. It's the taxpayer that is going to pay both of us. So, the last thing I want to do is to be mean to anyone? Or you just... You don't treat people with disrespect. If they don't owe the money, we just want the proper documentation to give it to the tax assessor so they can remove the tax. If they do owe the money, obviously, we'd like to get paid. They could do a partial payment plan. But there's no abuse involved in this because it... We wouldn't make a dime off of that, you know?
How are you more effective than a state marshal or the tax collector himself? What is it that you do that's unique?
We have a lot more resources.
Gets people to pay?
More resources as far as skip tracing. It's a continual process, which a lot of people would... Other, like a marshal or a tax collector, will not have the time to continually do that. We run a file. We keep running that file over and over again until we find it, pinpoint where this person is located.
And the marshal will be primarily in the state. Most of our collections, 8 percent will be out of state on these joint taxes. They're not even hearing the call.
I mean, you will get phone calls. When I was tax collector in West Haven, all of these, the companies that are involved in this, including ourselves, was not clearly defined how to do this stuff years ago. When I was in West Haven in 95, the company that they hired billed the people wrong, and it was just a horror show. But that's all part of the past. But you will get some complaints in the very beginning, probably for the first three to six months. The mayor will get called, the town manager will roll in the city council. You'll log your phone calls from constituents complaining about it, "Why haven't they found me?" But these are tax laws, and they're strictly laws. And if you go by the laws, there's not a problem. And if they haven't paid the bill, they failed to receive a bill, doesn't validate the bill, all those reasons. But you get a few complaints, but I said, like, it's not going to be that many. Ken will bear the brunt of it. He'll save all of you.
Any further questions?
So, you have... That's a limited amount of clients that we have that are just in your general area. You do recognize over about 50 of them.
Over 50?
No.
I got a couple of questions. The first one is to Andrew. As a marshal, do you have any comments or anything on this?
No, it sounds like they use the same programming that some of us use to locate the people. What program do you use to locate?
Autocheck. We use Cardfax. Wait, wait. No, that's for the assessor's office. Those are the two. TransUnion and... And there's the postal service, the... Yeah. I can't think right now.
Now, when you say postal service, the forwarding address expires. What do you do at that point?
And COA, PCOA, which is... A lot of people will order magazines, but they're not going to afford for a change of address to the post office. So, we try certain things for magazine subscriptions. We use LexisNexis. We use TransUnion. It cycles. So, we use about six different sources.
Does Lexis give you the full history of the person? In other words, do you have the full accessibility to their program? I know it's tailored to attorneys, collection, law enforcement, insurance.
Yeah.
You know, does it give you the full social? Do you get all that? Or is it limited to what you have?
Motor vehicle, which is what they're giving us right now. We do have access to socials, but DMV doesn't use our security numbers.
No, no. What I'm trying to say is to trace the individual. Say they moved from here to Wyoming.
Right.
Do you have...
We can pick it up. And then, yes. And divorced, and married, and remarried, yes. So, I could track it all.
So, you're doing some of the work in town already now? Or you're not?
No, not for me. No.
For ever.
Okay. So, no disrespect, but if you sit here long enough, you'll see that I question everybody. So, my question is, why you? You know, typically, as a town, we don't just have a company come present something to us, and you're our guy. We might have said, "Okay, good idea. Put feelers out there. See if there's companies that do this." And three or four might come to us. I mean, right now, I know absolutely nothing about you. I'm assuming that one of you is friends with Ken. And that doesn't really make me want to feel warm and fuzzy and say, "Let's go. We're going to hire you." No disrespect to Ken. But again, I question everything because I'm putting in my time up here like the rest of us. And I'm not going to... You know, and believe me, I've made an awful lot of bad choices in the 20 years that I've sat here by not asking enough questions.
No. Listen, one of the reasons that I'm with the... I was a tax collector in West Haven for 10 years. I've only recently met Ken through coming to his office and looking to get the collections. That's my only association with Ken. When I was in the association, he wasn't there. I wasn't... He wasn't involved when I was involved. But the reason I went to work...
Correct me if I'm wrong. Didn't West Haven go bankrupt or something?
West Haven in 1991, when I was on the city council, had a file. It was... They had a file for a state bailout, right after Bridgeport. And that was where this... I'll give you just a little history. When it was in Waterbury, there was a commission of about 30 people. Nothing got accomplished. It was a horrible show. Once West Haven went for the bailout, Lowell Iker was governor. I was on the council. I was majority leader at the time. And we had... I had... Because I was a former legislator, I went to Hartford to work on the bill. And we got lambasted on it because it circumvented every single arbitration law, everything in the state of Connecticut that always existed. But it ended up coming out as a seven-member panel, which is a lot easier to deal with. There was a representative, the president of the UI company was there, state treasurer, the mayor of West Haven, Richard Bora at the time. And it was two or three independent people on the city, on the thing. And they did all the arbitrary work for the city of West Haven. They approved the city budget. They went to arbitration on the contracts after the city council. So, they were the arbitrator, and they were pretty much the governing body in the same place. But that happened in West Haven. It also happened in Jewett City. It happened in two other towns, I believe. I'm not sure at the top of my head. But...
We're trying to keep that from happening here.
That's what you don't want to do. It was not fun. Because at that time, Richard Bora was speaking out against...
So, again, how do you prove to us that you guys are... You know, I don't know. Maybe it's one of our employees that needs to answer this. You know, I'm not sure how you got here.
David, can I pick you up? The Tax Collectors Association. All the tax collectors throughout the state go to this meeting. They do see other agencies. There's about three other collection agencies that handle state...
Okay. So, that's a good point. There's only... There's three of you in the state?
There's Val, Florida. Yes.
Okay.
Rossi, which is in Rhode Island. I can't speak for them, but I do know that we do collect a lot more money. I am the largest collection agency in the state of Connecticut that handles personal property taxes. They don't really collect that much out of state, is what I get back from the people that come forward with us, other municipalities. There's Taxer that uses a boot. A lot of the smaller municipalities don't like that idea, especially if you're financially strapped. At the time, the last thing you need is to put a boot on your car that's going to cost you $150 to get the boot off to pay your car taxes on top of that. It's very disrespectful.
That was in the Haven. If any of you remember in the Haven. It was fun.
It's just not a great thing. There's Credit Bureau of Connecticut. They don't have too many clients right now, but I think they're moving more into the hospital industry. But they do have several other municipalities also.
So, I guess, I don't know where the rest of them are, but I think for me, like, you said you worked in Branford. I mean, so, I would like a list of the communities that you worked in.
I think we gave you.
And then have the town manager or somebody talk to those communities and tell us, you know, what they think. You know? But I'm only one.
No, no. I can get you all the towns we have if you want, but I just put on the back of that page just the towns that were in your vicinity.
Most importantly, the taxpayers or the joint taxpayers, we do treat them with respect. We'll get you the proof that you need to remove the tax if it's not owed and the money isn't...
One of the different things that we do, and the reason I went to them, I started to say before, as a tax collector, this company knows Connecticut tax law. And they will decimate as much material that comes into them to minimize the effect that it has on the assessor and the collector. Proof of vehicle, if you got rid of it. If you file bankruptcy, which you may not have on your records, that'll come up. So, it clears up a lot of stuff. But they do decimate the stuff to make it easier on the assessor and the collector.
So, I've got a question. I don't know if it's for you or the tax collector here. What happens with people that don't turn in plates for their cars?
Right now, we... They can do... There are three options to get your taxes off, the rule. Your three forms of proof are your plate receipt, proof of sale, what happened to the car, whether it jumped, totaled, whatever. They'll accept it, meaning the assessor, or a letter from your insurance company saying when the car was believed. Those are the three types, of which the assessor requires two.
How do they come off? They come off when the registrations expire, I guess, actually, right? I mean, regardless, is that how that works?
They don't come off our list. I mean, it... They'll come off motor vehicles. Motor vehicle sends us their file. And if their registration expired, it's not there. We don't have it, nor does motor vehicle. So, it could still be taxed as, quote, "personal property, penalty, non-registered motor vehicle."
So, I guess what I'm getting at is a lot of the money that you're going to try to collect could be, like, people in town that just forgot to turn their plates in. And now, I heard you say something about going back 15 years. I know because you were in last meeting. I mean, we're going to have a mess, I think, of just, you know, trying to chase down people that... I mean, if we didn't collect the money now, why are we going to go after people, you know?
You've never done it. You've never done it before. Okay? So, that's your option. If you're going to do it, you do the 15 years. That's what's out there. Once it's done, it's done. Now, you're on the current realm. But you've never done it. So, it's just... It, you know, perpetuates itself as the years go on. You've got roughly a motor vehicle with interest for 15 years. I'm almost afraid to tell you, but it's slightly over $800,000. That's including interest, so you can roughly maybe do that.
But a lot of these things that we see on, like, the suspense list, they're rental car places and stuff like that.
And people that...
What do you mean rental?
When you... When you... We have a suspense list in front of us. A lot of it is like a rental car company or something like that.
Rental car companies are actually very good painters.
Well, I don't know why we suspend so many of them. Could it's like, almost like, you know, oh, they went out of business, or they... Or else they... Somebody stopped renting the car, and it's not in town anymore, you know? I mean, it's a lot of stuff. I mean, you know, here's the thing. It's a small town.
Right.
We see these people, you know? I mean, we'll see stuff come before us, and it'll say, "Can't be found." And I know where the kid is. They live in Colorado or something. You know what I mean?
When I say it can't be found, I'm saying I don't have any other means than the US may. With the exception of that, it goes to the marshal.
A lot of stuff we see in is car leasing. You know, at least a lot of stuff, when I read the suspense list, it's on automobiles. You know, it's like somebody was leasing a car, and they moved out of town or something like that, you know? And they don't need anything because they're not registering that car. The leasing company is, you know?[1545.67] The leasing company is, you know? So I don't know what we're... And again, going back 15 years, I mean...
Well, then, it's the old theory, what you do for one, you do for all. So Al Rose has motor vehicle taxes due for grand, let's say, 10 and 11, but he also has nine. So if you only go back, you know, those years 10 and 11, but we show proof that you still owe nine, the state says, the law says, you pay nine first and move up. So the 15 years is covering the whole picture. It's just like, you know, when you send out your warrants, all right? You've got three or four years worth. If there's another year that we found, that's the one that's due first.
So what do you do with companies in town that change one letter in their name and are registering their cars and stuff like that?
That's the bailout. That's what, people figure that out, and we have people that do that without mentioning names, that they can be, you can register Al Rose, you can register A. Rose, you can register Alfred Rose, and just keep going, and motor vehicles won't stop you.
I thought you had to have a license number now. I mean, and it has to be with your name. I thought you can't do that anymore, like, change your initials around and stuff like that.
No, you can, they do it all the time, all the time.
Motor vehicle is currently, it was in the news the other day, currently upgrading their system, which hasn't been done, I think, since the 1970s. And they're supposed to include a lot of that stuff with information online, and as you said, probably be something under license with notification as well. But it's all in the planning stages, nothing's ever released yet, but they are planning to make a whole bunch of upgrades.
Because even to register something in a business name, you need a corporate resolution, a tax ID number, you need a lot of stuff when you go to motor vehicle now. It's not as easy as you think.
The person's birthday, they cannot use social security numbers.
Yeah, but they use your license number. When you fill out a registration, you have to put a license number. If you don't have a license number, and most of the people down there want the exact name as it appears on your license on the registration.
But you're talking about a registration. As far as taxes are concerned, taxes are concerned with strictly a birthday. That's what the assessor is supplied with, and then what the assessor gives to the tax collector to collect.
No, you can keep registering your car and just change the name. They don't look at birthdays to stop you for registration. Strictly the name. As I said, it could be Al Rose, Alfred Rose, A. Rose, and you can just keep going. They do not recognize your driver's license as a stop.
You guys haven't been to motor vehicle lately, I tell you.
I think that everybody, you know, I think everyone should pay their taxes, you know? That's how our system works. So I personally would like to hear from some of the towns that they've worked in and get some feedback on that.
Uh huh. Now, our collection rate now is what, 90?
90.5.
I mean, where are we going?
You're cleaning up what's hanging out there that I can't touch because I just can't find them. I don't have the means nor the time.
You're also protecting the people that pay all the time and the people that didn't pay.
I don't see it that way. I think you guys are just digging for, I think you guys are just out there trying to go out there and find people that made a mistake and try to make, and going back 15 years, and in this economy, I have a problem with doing that to the taxpayers in this town. That's my one of nine opinion, I'm going to tell you straight out, I am not in favor.
Majority of them are going to be out of town, people that did leave. Those are the people that you shouldn't go after.
If we didn't get it now, I mean, I don't see how you guys are going to get that, but, I mean, I'm only one. I don't know how to rescue people, I don't feel about it.
I'd like to follow up on Al's idea. It's important to check out results and issues with other municipalities and then make a decision.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Just to let you know, the reason why, Anthony and I talked about it and why we want to present it, is that under your budget constraints, it's money out there. You want me to try and collect it, I'm telling you I can't.
Right.
It's too old and I don't have the means to do it. So the other option is a collection agency. Are you being fair or unfair? Well, you're being fair to those that paid.
Can I just ask you a question, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Part of your plan is to have accounts that are 60 days old turned over to the collection agency, not 15 years or 10 years or 12 years.
It goes back 15 years. In other words, we can collect from people who owe, at this point, from 1998 forward.
Right, but I think that you, that's not the, that's not the scope of their employment, as you described it. It's basically anything, any warrants that haven't been collected in 60 days by the sheriff would go to the collection agency.
Correct, right.
So that's, so that's a different type of category collection, I would think, than stuff that's been hanging around, as you say, for 15 years or 10 years.
And there, I don't know, any marshal that has the capacity could know where I could give him 15 years worth of tax. Just can't, you know, unless he has a huge staff, you know, wherewithal to do it, can't. So I give him two or three years, and even that's a burden, it's a high. He may have, you know, 3,000 warrants.
Can I ask the scope, Ken? Do you think you threw out a number of 800,000, right?
That includes past due interest, right.
Yeah, for the sake of argument, that's the number. Their success, I don't know, we'll call other towns and find out, but let's just, for argument's sake, 800,000 in their success rate is going to be 10% of that. That means we're not paying a dime and 80,000 comes in.
Correct.
If they're at only a 10%, and I don't know what their rate, I don't know what their success rate is, but when we call, that's going to be one of the questions. What have they done in Branford? What have they done in Derby or wherever they are?
Now, don't forget, when you do call the towns, most of them have done the 15 years. It's done and over with.
All gone.
Yeah. So, once you've done the 15 years, your next year, if you want to use a collection agency, will be the current grand list year.
Is it, what's the rule of thumb in terms of, if I put to our, to the expectation is, your success is, is it less than, is it 5% or is it 1%?
What, their success?
Yeah, 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 in terms of, if you look at, you know, at town, what are we talking about? I mean, what's that state?
The first, you know, it goes also with the length of time that I'm working it. The first impact of letters, and I will break it up in a certain section. And there is, it's going to be the first six months of the agency, that is the amount of money coming in and the amount of proof. The assessor will have a lot of proper documentation to remove. After that, he recycle the debts. We can keep sending it out, just give tracing. And we'll be steady, we'll, of course, payment people, so it, I'd say, as Michael was saying, every town is different.
Let me just go over that, just that 15-year bit so I can explain it to you a little bit better. It's not that we're going back 15 years on everybody. There may be accounts out there that are only five years old, but if you're going to do it, not to be discriminatory towards anybody to go out to collection, you can't just say, "I'm not going to send them out." You do it for everybody, so everybody has no complaint, they're all being treated fairly. But taxes are collectible for 15 years. It's not that they're 15 years old, there may be a lot of them that aren't. You know, we haven't seen the whole list yet, so we don't know what exactly they are, but it's not automatically everybody's 15 years.
All right. Item F, Capital Projects Clarification of Funding Sources.
Yeah, that one came back. I mean, we're still waiting from the state, as far as I know, and he hasn't heard anything from the state with respect to the audit, and until we have that, I don't think we have, you know, any, anything to report at this time.
New business discussion and action.
They announced some Steve Grant's award today in the paper. We didn't hear anything at all?
Uh, we did not. We were not on that list of 27.
There were five towns, yeah.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Local Adaptation of South Central Regional Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The South Central Regional Council of Governments applied for and received a grant to prepare and develop a hazard mitigation plan for 10 regional towns that don't have one. Towns like Guilford, East Haven, they had their own plans, they'd done them on their own because they had some conditions, but basically, the council governments put, applied for and received a grant to do the 10-town regional multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And basically, what, the underlying impetus behind this is FEMA, when you apply for a lot of grants, you need this hazard mitigation plan to be adopted, prepared and adopted. Basically identifies what hazards occur in a town, and primarily in North Branford, it's floods, hurricanes, and heavy winter snowstorms are the big ones. We also have the potential of a dam, you know, because they have the Lake Alarda there, there's a problem with a dam, or the impacts of that. Basically, the plan puts together, identifies the areas of concern and the types of storms, and potential solutions or mitigation measures that towns would pursue. And again, I'm going to reemphasize, in North Branford, it's basically floods, snowstorms, and hurricane-type events where you have downed trees and wires. The plan itself, I may have a copy here, and there's an appendix that's about, you know, about eight inches thick that goes with it. It goes through this haz, haz, I think it's hazmat analysis, identifying potential costs associated with all the different potential hazards that the towns are exposed to. There's a lot of, that's what the appendix primarily identifies. The bottom line, this hazard mitigation plan, and it's available online, and I referenced it because it's 300-something pages, is online at the South Central Regional Council of Governments' website. By adopting the plan, it makes the, and the plan was approved by Connecticut DEP and FEMA at this point, with conditional approval. Once the towns all adopt it, it makes us eligible for the, applying for grants in the future. And the grants that we've always identified in the past have been primarily generators. A town hall generator, police station upgrade, and firehouses are the primarily identified needs. But without adoption of this plan, we can't even apply for a lot of these grants.
Is there anything in there that would precipitate or cause us not to want to adopt it?
Absolutely not. This is, it just puts us in line, doesn't, didn't cost us anything. These plans normally, if a town did it on their own, is probably $75,000 to $100,000 to prepare one of these. It worked beautifully with the council governments to prepare the plan. The town participated, all the regional, there was somebody directed from each town to help in the preparation of the plan and reviewing it. But in the end, it puts us, it makes us eligible to apply for grants. And again, the biggest ones that have been identified, the need is generators. And the first one that we would go after would be for this facility. Several of the towns have already adopted. We're all going sort of through the same process at this point. But available any questions? And there is a suggestive motion, this is prepared by the council governments, on the second page of the attachment, you know, identifies a motion, required authorizing resolution to adopt the plan. The good thing also is the council governments will budget for updates because they're periodically required, so it's, they're doing a good service for the area communities.
Also says we have to approve future revisions and plan maintenance required under the co-federal regulations for the next five years. So they are asking us to kind of buy a pick and poke.
Right, it's basically, so it allows this, plans adopted, future revisions are hereby adopted as part of the resolution for a period of five years. Because in five years, it'll actually be a, it'll be required to be revised in full. This is a resolution prepared by the council governments.
If we don't adopt this precise resolution, we're not in the generator-eligible plan?
Yeah, this is what they provided us that we need to adopt. It doesn't lock us into doing anything, it's really what it makes, it makes us eligible.
Yeah, I know, we also thought Murma was a great idea when we adopted it 10 years ago or whatever it was.
Again, there's no funding committed from the town.
But I think we can tweak the language a little bit for council.
If you want to tweak it.
Can you find out if we can adopt the plan as is without agreeing to unknown future revisions?
And if you want, we can just table it. I mean, two weeks is not the end of the world.
Yeah, table it and make a phone call.
And I'll check on that and get back to you, that's fine.
And they're asking us to take a great leap of faith.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a problem, I'm just trying to keep it moving, that's all. All right, if you table it, then I'll bring, we'll bring it back for the next.
Thanks, Chris.
All right.
I'm making motion to table this.
I'll second it.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Watworth, seconded by Councilor Fucy to table item A, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
OPEB, Office of, other post of plan.
Was the statement included in your agenda packets attached to my memo, or no?
No.
It was not?
You mean, you proposed agreement?
Uh, this is the investment policy statement for the OPEB fund.
I was looking.
Nine big. If it was, we could table it next time.
No, we just got this.
Just cover memo. Move the table then.
Move the table.
Seven.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Watworth, seconded by Councilor Diamond to table OPEB, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, Annual Appointment of Auditor.
This is just a statutory requirement that we have to report to OPM, who are auditor for the coming years, and a recommendation is to stay with Sir Damandi in their second year of their three-year contract plus two one-year instanctions. The cost would be $32,000, and there's a format to sit up to the state notifying them.
Is it the same fee as last year or not?
Correct, identical. Yeah, they didn't raise the fee at all.
I'm moving the motion.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Watworth, seconded by Councilor Fawnin, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Item D, Review of Town Vehicle Policy, Number of Cars and Emblems on Vehicles.
Is this the same policy that we've had in effect right along, Mike?
As far as I know, yeah, I haven't, I haven't touched it, then.
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
Now, pardon. Are labels on all the cars, what do they call those?
An envelope.
Are they on all the cars that we have?
I don't think they're on all of them. I'm not sure, I don't know.
Well, we exempt BOE, Fire Department, Police Department, right out of their regulation. Why don't we exempt BOE?
I don't know. I don't have the history, I don't know.
I think that was superintendent's car.
Well, the superintendent hasn't had a car.
Or a truck bar?
All your cars, trucks, have labels on them too, for any?
I can understand why the police need unmarked cars, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But I don't see anybody else.
No, I don't either.
Should have a town's emblem on it, we should know it's a town car.
See, the only thing is, though, with the police, and this is a good thing that we have a future police commissioner here, these cars, I'm not sure why the police, why they would be exempt. Would the, would they be exempt, John, because the police commission has the power to tell them what they can do? But, I mean, every one of us sitting here knows that, you know, number one, we all know what a police car looks like, especially when they're the, you know, it's like when we were little kids and the, today's FBI was on Sunday night, you know? They knew they had a Ford Galaxy.
They don't have any labels because they have that big police thing on the side of them, is that why?
They have nothing on them, but they look like a cop car, you know? I mean, with no North Branford name, but, I mean, we've had police officers, because when you read in here, it says, "Can't use it for recreational purposes and stuff." We've had police, we've had, we, as counselors, we have had pictures taken at a hockey rink in Enfield
Yes, sent to us.
with a police detective who's retired already taking his kid to hockey. And, you know, on Sunday. And to me, that's not what that car's about. So I would like to bring that into the police commission to either show us their policy on their cars, or, you know, why should the taxpayers of North Branford buy gas for a cop to take his kid to Enfield to hockey? You know, I just don't see that. You know, maybe somebody can explain that to me, but I'm glad this is on here, because, you know, I'm reading through it and I'm like, "Oh, good, that can't be done," and then I see exempt, fire and police. So what I'd like to do is see who sets the car policy for the police department, and if maybe, if they do it, maybe Andrew could take this document and look at it and say, you know, "I understand that a detective may have to get called out in the middle of the night so he gets to bring his car home."
I don't remember all the specifics, Al, but we got upset about the precise example you're raising right now. And we actually started to do something about it, and the police commission undercut us by voting that that particular person was somehow grandfathered in, and we couldn't touch that person's car. I don't remember the specifics, but I remember we got a bag door on it.
Again, so hopefully the police commission is going to start working with us. So, I guess, all right, you're right, I do remember that now.
What I do know is, from other towns, and I'm sure it applies here, and Anthony and the chief could probably attest to it, there are supervisors that are on call technically 24 hours a day, even though it seems absurd to have a vehicle in Enfield at a sporting event. Hypothetically, if they, or, not even hypothetically, but if they get called, they have to respond. I don't know, chief of my, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, but they have their kid.
So what do you do? You throw your 10-year-old kid in the back of the cruiser and you light him up round 91? There you go. And then get in a crash and the town's liable. So again, I would hope that you can bring this.
So, I will definitely get updated information.
Well, I tell you, I know, attending the last fire commission meeting, they do have a car policy and seem to be very strict.
Well, we ought to collect them and we ought to see what their policies are, but I remember specifically the example he's citing, and the other thing that struck me was that particular car. We get...
Mileage.
Yeah, we get a mileage statement on every car when they're, when we're being asked to fund additional police vehicles.
That car.
And that one was off the charts.
Right, gas and mileage.
So, so again, Andrew, you have your first, your first homework assignment as a police commissioner.
December is coming up for a.
I know. You're going to wish you did. All right, what else were we looking at? This is from 1998. I actually was on the council when we did it.
Well, I mean, like Michael, if someone has to go to a seminar out of state or something, they record it with you before.
Right. See, because we had an order, and I don't see it in here, we had that the cars couldn't go out of state. Is that in here somewhere? Or I just, I just kind of skimmed it.
So this policy here just provides the town hall.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
We had them that they couldn't go out of state without being asked. And again, there's always a reason. We had somebody who was abusing it and taking a car out of state. Who, who in town hall takes a car home now? We know Kurt does.
Right, Kurt does. Fran does.
Yeah, but don't drop the plow on your driveway, man.
I think those are the only two. Otherwise, it's police, fire, and public.
So out of town hall, it's just.
Well, we have the vehicles parked here, so if they, yeah.
Right, during the day.
Yeah, they sign them out during the day, but nobody's taking them.
So the only ones that go home are the town engineer and the public works.
Is purchasing or no?
No, it wasn't the chief. It was something else.
Guideline number one, Al, the third line down, search and rescue, within the state of Connecticut, or out of state, or based on the town manager.
There you go. I knew I wasn't losing my mind. It is still there. I think this is a pretty good car policy.
Yep.
And you reported that the fire has a good policy, so.
Yeah.
Andrew's going to work on the PD and we're good to go.
All right. Okay, where are we now? Discussion on foreclosure. Yep. Yeah, you're like through, I don't, F through a J.
F through J. Okay, so at the last, where did he go?
I said he.
He got away. So at the last meeting, and I did bring my state statutes tonight, so, so what I was talking about and I had reviewed was a tax sale. So I asked the question as to how we do a, and they have all these different names, but how we do like a judiciary tax sale or tax lien or tax whatever, instead of doing a tax sale. And.
It didn't make sense then.
If you did tax sale and the tax collector does it, there is a six-month redemption period.
Al, are you talking about that interruption? Are you talking about the sale of the lien or the property?
Property.
The property you're talking about. Not selling the liens to.
No, no.
To private individuals.
No. If, I gotta find where I had it. We've been on deep, we've had a lot of paper tonight. So in looking at all the different areas, and, and you know, in light of the one that just happened, you know, again, round figures, the guy owed like 50,000, by the time he got done, it was 80. And that's court costs, sheriff's costs, the committee cost and all that. So, and I'm just round numbers. And so, to me, we're kicking a guy while he's down. And if the tax collector has the ability to, and it's clear, and you know, on how they can do it, you know, send out three, three registered letters to a place of business and then they, you know, if you read through it, the tax collector can go out and put a sign up and hold an auction. However, there's a six-month period of redemption where the person who bought it doesn't get clear title of it and then, in six months' time, if the guy gets back on his feet, he can buy it back and he pays the guy that bought it 18 percent. And all is good. So the reason I asked this at the last meeting, that might be, now, if we're going to go after somebody's family farm that's been in business or been the family for 100 years, this seems a little softer way to do it where, and I know, you know, if you're getting collected on, you're at least two years delinquent, so maybe six months isn't going to help you. But, you know, the phone calls that some of us got here was that somebody would be able to pay their taxes, they needed a couple months. So I wanted to ask Ken how he, why he doesn't use all the tools at his disposal and why, I mean, I like lawyers and all. If, you know, you got a guy down, they owe 50,000, now they got to pay 80 because it went to court.
Well, I think there's two answers. He did research it and in the whole collector association, there's one person who, I think it's in Norwalk, happens to be an attorney and a tax collector. And the reluctance is, you don't want to go through that process as a layperson because if you make a mistake, then you're on the hook for that error. So that's why it's, from our perspective, if the guy owes 50,000, what do we care how we get the 50,000? What's going to be easiest for us, quite honestly? We're, you know, staffing is always initially these departments, so why burden that additional task? Why not just farm it out to the town attorney's office? We get our $50,000, whatever, in your example, and at the end of the day, we're made whole. So why put additional burden internally when you have the town attorney's office? That's their specialty. They do collections.
I think just, there is, Al and I had a little chat before and we understand that there's a difference between a tax sale and the foreclosure, the foreclosure being something that is judicially supervised. But to address your rationale, your concerns, I actually think it goes the other way because a few weeks ago, or maybe it was the last council meeting, I don't know, a list of all the foreclosures that have been sent out, in this case, to my office, I think all but one actually had been agreed to. There was an agreement with the debtor. The one that there wasn't agreement with the debtor and the one that went to court, the court actually refused to approve the sale because it went too low, because there was so much equity in the property and at the auction it went so low that the court would not approve the sale. Now, a resident, in the case of a tax sale, wouldn't have that. It's all up to the whim of the, of the tax collector. And, you know, there is, the notice requirements are questionable, they, there's no hearing, the judge doesn't look at the papers, he doesn't have oversight of the process. And as we, as we talked before the meeting, although, although there's been some changes by statutory amendments, there are still title insurance companies that may not insure the title that's obtained through a tax sale, which frankly discourages people from attending a tax sale if they can't get title insurance. And they're treating it more or less on a case-by-case basis. Anthony referenced that sometimes the tax collector, if he makes a mistake, gets sued and the town has liability. It's generally limited to the amount of money that, wow. But more interesting, the way I see it, because I know what it takes to sort of manage this from my office point of view, I think it's going to cost the town more money because I don't think the tax office, let's say we went gung ho on tax sales, I don't think they could do it with the present staff. You're talking a lot of money, you're talking potential exposure, you can't have people not be attending to that one specific thing. You may need another person or persons. And those fees, unlike with a foreclosure, they're not recoverable. The extra time that the taxpayer, the tax office, tax collector, the finance director, the secretary, anybody who has to devote extra time to this, that, those hours aren't recoverable. Hours that are, hours that are done in a foreclosure are all, all recoverable and approved by the court. So what, what I, what I know is that the tax sale is a, is a, sort of like a device that the Bridgeports and the Hartford's use when they have a bunch of properties that are basically dilapidated and they see if they can get, catch somebody to buy it. The last thing you want to do is own the property. And it's also, you know, I think it also is a collection gimmick. A lot, I, I think very few tax sales actually go to auction. I think they see what happens when they get the letter and they may be able to collect it that way. But it's been around for a while and, but I think for the town's purposes, it's probably not a good course of action. All right, thank you.
Cool. Okay. Item F, ordinances for fire marshal fees.
Yeah, this is, the chief is here, but this is a cluster here with a group of F, G, H, and I. And it's really, you know, the chief is here to kind of discuss its informational purposes. These are not ready to go to hearing or anything like that, but subject to tonight's discussion, if you feel, the council feels it's worth moving forward, we can move forward. But the chief is here to kind of walk you through each of the four items.
Thanks, Michael. On the annual basis, the town manager often asks department heads as to their ability to increase the town's finances by raising funds. And over the last couple of years, and actually through the last, at least two town managers that we've had, the fire department through its commission has brought to their attention the ability to recover costs or generate funds by certain avenues. And it's all predicated upon putting ordinances in place. So before Anthony takes his finance hat off and puts his deputy fire chief's hat on and addresses these individually, I just want to give you a couple of thoughts. First of all, as I stated, the board of fire commissioners have worked vigorously over the last couple of years and finally, in January 2014, passed these with the recommendation to move them to the town council for their consideration. If we look at these in general, people may say, well, we're trying to double tax individuals through some of these efforts. The fire service doesn't look at it in that nature. Just some bullet points from the International Association of Fire Chiefs. First of all, billing people for services or generating funds through fees generated out of the fire marshal's office through plan review, et cetera, or encouraging people to put certain size numbers on their homes or requiring them to put a security box on their building that allows the fire department to have access to their occupancy in unoccupied hours is critical to the nature of what the fire service does. So all of these are familiar content to the fire service. Some are cost recovery in nature, and that is through the generation of funds, the ability to decrease the taxes and offset the costs that fire departments operate through. There's a number of departments that surround us and municipalities that surround us have already taken steps, already have ordinances in place to generate funds that offset their operational costs. The language that we have enacted and the board of fire commissioners already approved comes from that, comes from that work. We have the ability to collect fees for fire rescue billing through a process that we already have in place. In our ambulance billing contract, we have language that allows that billing service to also bill for fire rescue services. And as that topic is discussed, which I guarantee, it's unfortunate that the crowd suddenly left tonight because they would probably be up in arms when some of this is discussed. That's, that's too bad. Because people may say, well, you're trying to charge me for services that were, I'm already paying taxes for. The general population sees it that way. We don't see it that way and neither does the International Association of Fire Chiefs. It's not a double taxation, it's not a tax, it's cost recovery of services that the fire department provides on a general basis. So with that said, Deputy Chief Anthony Esposito will address items F through I that have been formalized by the board of fire commissioners to recommend to this council. And I know you're going to have a ton of questions, so we'll do our best to answer them. And again, you know, we're all taxpayers here, we're all citizens, so we all have the same concerns. But in some of these proposals, it's a way to make the fire department more effective on the emergency scene. It will allow us to get to a home in a much more expeditious fashion. As you know, some of our town streets aren't properly labeled. Needless to say, some of the houses aren't labeled at all. And it goes without saying that you could have the numbers jumped by tens, by hundreds going down the same street. It makes it extremely, extremely difficult for a fire apparatus to respond to a home or an ambulance in the middle of the night to answer an EMS call when numbers aren't placed on homes, when numbers jump by the hundreds from building to building that are on the same street, or odd numbers are on the even side of the street, or even numbers are on the outside of the street. That's the town we live in. We don't have computers in our trucks like the police department does. We have two ambulances that have computers, but the rest of the apparatus, you're going by the knowledge of the apparatus operator and the people on board. We don't have a map book to take out. Our GIS program, our GIS person was eliminated from the town budget a number of years ago. So we have no data hard copied in a truck to show us where we're going in the middle of the night. So some of these things that we're looking for you to approve will help us do that job. Thank you.
Okay, we go in order, as the chief's already mentioned, the first one being the billing for the office of the fire marshal fees. Again, a service that we surveyed many towns and throughout the state, there are several that do bill. Hamden, Antoni, a bunch of people bill already. So I think what I'd like to focus on all of these is not so much the dollar amount, more of the conceptual agreement. Because until we go down this path, the dollars are very soft. I mean, they're our best guess based on numbers, historical averages for plan reviews and burning permits and things along that line. But until we actually enact the ordinance and to, you know, start charging the folks, the fees we're going to collect are very soft numbers. And as the chief had mentioned also, this is not a new concept, this is proposed to a couple of prior town managers and they chose not to bring these fees forward. And it's an opportunity, we think. The first case, in the case of the fire marshal's fees, the revenue would be general fund revenue, just like building permit fees would go to the general fund to help offset the tax base. Again, you know, we're looking probably in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000, maybe $20,000, not set the world on fire, but it's money that's out there. And if you're coming in to do a multimillion dollar project, another $100 for a plan review fee to the fire marshal's office, or a sprinkler permit fee, or in the case of the burning permit, the mayor was at a meeting that got discussed about having an annual burning permit fee. A lot of time is involved. If a person wants to have a burning permit in their yard, requires our fire marshal or deputy to go out, make sure they're not burning anything that's illegal, take pictures, come back, send a form, back to the police station. So there's many steps involved, a lot of time is consumed in those. So it's, again, it's an attempt to recoup some of that lost time and to recover the costs. So $25 for a full month permit, as you see on page six, is very reasonable. There's no, no charge for that now currently.
They have to put some bite in case they.
Right, right, there's got to be a penalty clause somewhere in here. There are, the police obviously can, if it's an illegal burn, they can issue an arrest. But we try to be, again, amicable and not have that happen.
Right.
So the first one, again, is the fire marshal fees. And again, there's all different levels of inspection, occupancy inspections, you have daycares require an annual inspection, liquor establishments require annual inspection. So they're required to go out there, it's a cost of doing business for those entities, why not capture it? The second one is fire insurance recovery. I encourage you to go to your house when you go home tonight and pull your car insurance policy or your house policy. You will see something called fire service charge. You're paying for this already. So when we go in accident, you get into an accident, we don't bill you, your insurance company won. This, this is low hanging fruit. This is out there, you're paying for it already in your insurance policies. This is out there, you're paying for it already in your insurance policies. We're not going after it, so shame on us. And the neat thing about the insurance recovery is we make the parameters. So if Anthony gets to an accident, the bill goes to Anthony's insurance company. I would never see an individual bill for a balance because the local authority creates the parameters for the plan. So you bill Nationwide Insurance, whatever I happen to have, if they, they say no, it stops there. So again, the nice thing about this is you create the parameters and it's spelled out, again, these are rates that are common amongst the other towns we surveyed. Five hundred dollars for a fire, a thousand for a commercial fire, there's a rescue rate for an accident that requires, let's say, extrication, speedy dry, hazmat calls. The goal on this would be to capture this money. This, again, is probably, we're looking net numbers about a twelve thousand dollar net to the town. Now, our, our thought on this one would be to create a special revenue fund and have that money set aside for fire department expenditures. So as that pot accumulated, instead of having to go back to the taxpayers to replace a ladder, replace a hearse tool, replace this or whatever, out of this new pot of money, that could be used for that. So that's, that's the fire billing projection. Again, the rates, as you see in there, are basically the norm that we've come across in our, in our research.
So if somebody had, in a home has a burst pipe, they would have, their insurance would get billed for five hundred dollars?
Yes. Yes. Never, never would the person themselves get a bill. The billing company, as the chief alluded to, would have the contacts to, we'd get the information. It'd be incumbent, be a lot more work on the fire department, you might find out who your insurance company is, get a copy of it, information, write it down, turn it over to our billing company, who then will bill your insurance company, hey, we had a call at Marie's house, this happened, so on and so forth, here's the charge. So that's the fire rescue billing. The key lock box, you'll notice as you go around town, many of the establishments, probably since 2001 or so, have the Knox boxes installed on them. And every new building we've had, you go to Rite Aid in the center of town, you go to Big Y, anything that's new in the last dozen or so years has the Knox boxes installed. And the problem we have is anything that's prior to that, we have no way to go to you and say, Andrew, you own a business, we need a Knox box on it. You'd say, I'm not going to do it, it's like four hundred dollars, it's not, not a cheap venture. But, give you a, a quick story. About two months ago, we had a call at a pizza parlor in town, and no Knox box, three o'clock in the morning. And we get there, we do a 360 on the building, and there's no obvious flame. We look inside, we see a flicker. Okay, what do we do? Owners, donors en route, we see a flicker still inside. Well, we were this close to breaking down the door, what happened was he had a pilot light on his stove. No fire, no emergency, but from the outside, we saw this flicker in, in the stainless steel of his stove in enclosure. So, he's like, I'm glad I came. Yeah, you, you are glad you came because five more minutes, you would have, would have lost your front door and would have cost you a lot more money than four hundred dollars to fix your, your establishment. So, it, it's a great tool, it keeps the, the keys, let's say, for alarm panels, different access doors, this building has, all the schools have Knox boxes, all the town buildings have Knox boxes. Call goes up, middle of the night, you can get in and, and get to all the different buildings where there, there might be a problem. But this is basically puts it in, into the, the town code that says, okay, you must have a town, you must have a Knox box, or a key box, as it's called. Knox is a brand that we happen to, to subscribe to. This, this was in place, this was before the council in like 2003. And the concern was that the key to these Knox boxes was hanging loosely in the fire trucks. And what the fire department's done is we've installed these vaults in the trucks that are controlled from the dispatch center. You have to say, okay, I'm in engine one, activate the Knox box key. And they from dispatch activate a code over the air and it opens up the vault. You take the key out and you go and you get into the Knox box. So that, that fear has been alleviated through the last probably five or six years of installing those, those vaults in, in the apparatus. So that's the Knox box keys. Street numbering and sign, I encourage you to drive home tonight, if you're driving home, notice how many houses, you see the nice letters, the numbers on, and how many you don't see. Picture somebody's dying in that house without the numbers on it, and expect us to find it in the middle of the night, on a rainy night with the windshield wipers going at three o'clock in the morning. It's next to impossible. So, this last one is for people's own safety. And as chief mentioned, there's a lot of interior lots. You go into one driveway, there's four houses off of it. Which one is which? You know, so this also calls for, if you have an interior lot, reflective at, at the junction, you know, house number 204 is this way, 206 is this way, you know, and reflective numbers. Make our job easier, we're trying to help the people that are, you know, in a dire strait situation, save time versus having to go and knock on the wrong house three different times to get to the fourth house where the call actually was. So, that's it in a nutshell. Again, the fire marshal fees would be general fund revenue. The fire rescue be, fire rescue fees are envisioned to, a new general, a new special revenue fund to be used for fire department expenditures as approved by the, by the fire commission. The third one is the Knox box, the key lock box, again, for, as the chief mentioned, expediting and increasing our effectiveness at a scene. Instead of waiting twenty minutes for, you know, a guy to get there, for coming from, where he's coming from, the owner of the business, three o'clock in the morning, we can get in, determine it is a fire, put it out, or determine it's nothing. And the guy can, you know, calm down and come at, at his leisure. We've done that before. And then the street numbering, again, is for the safety of the residents. This ordinance currently exists, you see on the books, this is chapter 205. The changes in here are the underlined section where it talks about putting the, the three-inch reflective numbers on both sides of your mailboxes, anywhere there's an interior lot and any kind of split off, directional arrows have to be reflective as well. Again, just making the job of, and it's not only, not only fire, it's police as well. You know, police, fire, ambulance, anybody's got to get, you know, to your house in an emergency. If the house isn't properly numbered, it's, it's a long delay. So again, encourage you to drive home tonight, you'll see the numbers on, on your headlights. It's so much easier to find a house that numbers on it. You know, people have the nice scriptive numbers, it doesn't help us. We want to, we want to see three-inch reflective numbers, and it, it makes a big difference that you're driving down, you'll notice tonight, your homework assignment.
All right, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and one last thing on that, I, I was talking with Earl and, touch your paint, thank you. And he's willing to, you know, the question is, how does this go into place? And we talked maybe having like a Boy Scout project. Earl's willing to get involved with that, to even maybe buy them in bulk, or talk to his supplier about getting some donated. If we can get the Boy Scouts to be on board, say, okay, we'll go around, here's a, here's a gross of, you know, two, three, fours, okay, go over to your house, we'll number you, okay, for five dollars, I'll do your house for you, or whatever, you know, ten dollars donation. So we can have some, the Boy Scouts have a little fundraising project, it gets this accomplished, everybody's safer in the end, we're all happy, happy, and that's the bottom line.
Right. Yeah.
How would you like to proceed? I mean, would this be something you digest and then maybe discuss again after you've had time to review and think about it at the next meeting, and then decide if you want to move forward after that, and set it, you know, set a public hearing potentially? I'll bring it back and put it on the agenda for next meeting on June 3rd? As a course of action, does that sound okay?
Yeah. I mean, to me, the street signs numbering, I mean, that's something we should definitely do. But the, yeah, the insurance recovery and stuff, I think we need more.
Public hearing, square meters. Yeah.
Item J, animal shelter options.
Yeah, the, the question was to explore, you know, what our options are and look at other towns, so I've begun to, you know, reach out, Gina's also helping me collect some information from these other towns. You know, town of East Haven, you know, they have twenty kennels, twenty for dogs, fifteen for cats. They're a little concerned about how, how it would work, and they don't, they, I don't think they've seen a model or understand the model, so that, that they haven't outright said, you know, not going to happen, but they're, they're concerned about that just in terms of, you know, whether they have the capacity or not. Yes, I guess they do with their kennel, but it's still, it's a lot more work I'd have to do to see if they're, you know, up the chain of command, so to speak, to see whether or not they engage...
They handle critters?
What, what? Oh.
They handle critters?
No, no, it's, it's, you know...
Strictly dogs and cats.
Yeah. Strictly cats and dogs. And then Guilford, I haven't made contact there, it's just, I left a message, but it's from research, it just looks, it appears to be only dogs and cats available as well to service. Interestingly enough, town of Durham works with a private kennel, pays twenty-five dollars a day per animal, only when there is an animal in the kennel, otherwise they don't pay. And there's a, you know, reporting system that they get from the, from the private owner, so they privatize it out to do that. North Haven essentially does have the capacity, but they sold that off to Hamden because Hamden read space from North Haven. So, that doesn't look like it's viable unless they have excess capacity on top of that, so I've got a, I got a call back to, to find out that, that question. But it appears that they would, would be maxed out if they're handling Hamden as well. So, Madison, I haven't talked to, I'm not sure how far we want to go.
Well, would they, did the private facility in Durham, did they go get the dogs too?
That, I don't know the details in terms of how that's worked out, if they're, right, if they're getting the dogs, I presume that they're just, they're being brought to the privates, that they're not out there acting as an animal control officer, they're just serving as a, as a kennel, and that their officer or animal control is bringing them in.
Because Durham still doesn't have a PD, right? They, they still have a resident state trooper?
I believe the first selectman is the police chief out in Durham. That's what I heard, anyway. So I don't know if they have a state trooper or not. They probably do though.
They have a resident trooper.
They have a resident trooper?
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars a day, you'd, you could put an awful lot of dogs and cats in to get up to a hundred and some thousand, so I, I wonder if, I wonder if it isn't something that we should look at, or, you know, before we sign another year with Branford, at least put some failures out there to see who would, if somebody wanted to bid to take care of the dogs and catch them or something, you know? I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And, and I, I don't know how many dogs, I just don't know. We never really got a clear answer from Branford on how many animals were ours. Does Branford catch critters as well?
They take everything. I mean, everything. When we walked in there, there was lizards, there was snakes, it was, I mean, everything.
Everything.
Yeah, right, I mean, you, you, yeah.
We're probably paying, paying for some of those critters.
All right. Item K, you're up. Again, financial reports.
Financial report, top line, as you noticed, the current taxes are continuing to exceed the prior year's numbers. The total revenue appears to be drastically off, eighty-seven point nine compared to ninety-seven point four last year. And it's all the timing of that state, the ECS grant, the education grant. You notice last year was a hundred percent, this year it's fifty percent, that last fifty percent. Sometimes it comes in March 31st, sometimes it comes in April 1st. This year it's coming in, I mean, May 1st, I'm sorry. As far the expenditure side, again, the, the built tightening that Mike put in place, we're actually below last year's expenditure level, seventy-nine point six compared to eighty point three. So the, the spending freeze that Mike put in place has, has worked. And with any luck, we can maintain this through the last month and a half of the year and in the, in the black, which is going to be a remarkable feat, you know, where we were in dire straits about three months ago. So with the cooperation of all the departments, it's really, really helped quite a bit. And aside from that, there's no other noteworthy comments.
With the technology, what is that, why is that a hundred and sixty percent?
Uh, well, we typically don't budget enough. And I mentioned, Mike and I met with the Board of Ed folks to see if there's a way to mitigate that, and there really isn't. As the world around us becomes more and more technology driven, you know, whether it's a network is having a problem, or we change internet providers, or bugs on people's machines, viruses require somebody to come in, I'm limited what I, I can do without calling in outside resources. So we have somebody who, you know, getting a great deal from, he's very responsive and he's a local resident, just that the, the costs, his costs is in there plus the other, other fees we have online now, we can get the, the code for the, the town clerk is online, we have taxes online, we have, the ordinances are online. So all these things, they have a, a fee to get that way. So as we get more and more technologically savvy, there's a cost associated with that, you know, website hosting, email hosting, this is also, we changed, recall a few months back, we changed to the Comcast Internet cable to the bundle pack, package for like public works and Town Hall and things like that. So we, we've gotten some changes to our technology that was outside of the budget process, but the council blessed them earlier. It's just an area that is, is prone to be, it's like the town attorney's office, it's prone to be overspent. We'd never budget, budget enough for it. It's hard to foresee what problems are going to pop up, that's what boils down to news. Again, there's just so many different little subsets of technology, whether it's the engineer's office, or the town clerk's office, or the assessor's office, and it's just, the life's on the computer today. And as things break, we need to repair them and systems, you know, problems and bugs and viruses and everything else, so it's a pretty complex situation. Sorry, can't give you a more specific answer, but it's...
But the idea of working with the Board of Ed just isn't going to work out?
It's not, it's not going to work per se. We, we did have a nice meeting, and as we look in this coming July to get some new servers, we're looking at probably locating our servers at MBIS, getting them out of this building and putting it, it's a nice climate controlled, very secure area, has proper fire protection for tech, technology assets, and also increasing some new switches that they may be able to manage for us. So they are going to get a little bit more involved, and just by them hosting it over there, we're going to have the nutmeg network link between this building and that building, so we'll have some enhanced speed as well. So the combination of those factors, from them getting involved on a daily operation probably doesn't make a lot of sense, Dave. What they're explaining to us is as with this new testing being computer based now, the number of PCs and appliances and tablets they have to maintain is just exponentially growing every year. And it's kind of a burden on them, so they really can't see anybody that can spare up to be our technology person. So this person that we have, local person, is, is a bargain at the rate he charges us, again, very responsive, but there are times we need him here quite a bit, and some days we don't need him at all, I may go for a week never seeing him, but maybe here every day, sometimes for a week, just has problems pop up. And that's also for other outside buildings as well. He may go to, Fran may have a problem, or Recreation may have a problem. So there's a bunch of people that come out of that same technology pot.
Thank you.
Very, very few. The top two are the actual true transfers this year. The bottom two are actually per the budget, that we budgeted one hundred and thirty thousand to go to the ambulance fund, just the mechanics of moving it from the ambulance line to the operating transfer line, and the same with the twelve thousand for the insurance, of the insurance reserve, just the mechanics of moving it down to meet the, the budget request.
I'll move the motion.
Second. Move by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fusi?
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Item M, tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fusi?
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
We have to add item N, be it hereby resolved, as the New Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the 2014, 15 fiscal year, twenty-nine point nine-two mills, and further authorizes Michael T. Paul as town manager to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July 1st, 2014, and January 1st, 2015.
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
You're going to, or, did you already move, added to the agenda first, I think? Did I miss that?
He didn't, he's doing...
Yeah, I'll move to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fawnin to add item N, 9N. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fusi?
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
All right, now...
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right, now, the motion was moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Art's was a joke.
No, it was I.
All right. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
No.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, item 10, citizen statements and petitions.
I'm going to take my chief's hat off and talk as a resident. I think the town council should be proud of itself, being the leaders of the town, because this weekend, Lynn and Mark Riordan and John Bieswitz held their annual Matt's Mission Race, just around the corner from here, and being affiliated with that organization, I know the town manager put his best foot forward in about a little over 30 minutes completed the race, but it was fantastic. The weather was superior, there was a ton of participating residents and non-residents, they had a great time. Everybody that came by, the various positions on the course, had smiles on their face, we had people pushing carriages, it was just tremendous to see. And I think, again, supporting that group is just outstanding, so you should be proud of yourself for the event that took place.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, fire chief's hat back on. Couple points that you should be aware of. There was a tragic, a couple tragic events occurred recently in the town. And I routinely get information fed to me about the work that we do. And I just want to read a couple sentences out of an email that I got from Dr. Sandy Bogutsky, who's our medical director from Yale New Haven Hospital, and I'll read the parts that I could, because some of it is protected information. Starts off by saying, as you know, I was in the field yesterday doing a medical authorization ride with a new medic, and was able to respond with AMR Car 52 when the Sharp Team, that's sponsored hospital, area physicians' response team, was requested at the motor vehicle accident on Route 22 in North Branford. It was a tough car versus truck incident that involved fire suppression and extrication of a young woman. I want to pass along a few words of appreciation for the outstanding and professional response provided by both your services, and the email went to the fire department in North Branford, it went to AMR, I also forwarded it to other individuals in the fire department, as well as the PD. I want to pass along a few words of appreciation for the outstanding professional response provided by your services under these challenging circumstances. The North Branford Fire Department accomplished an incredibly swift extrication, considering the condition of the patient, was assisting as the patient was removed. Talks about the paramedics and the great work that they did. I sent the email to the officers, I was on vacation at the time, answering my emails, as I usually do away, forwarded to Antony, and the critical incident stress debriefing was held for involved parties. And I think it just says so much for the departments in town of the work that they do, when it's recognized by somebody with Dr. Bogutsky's level of expertise, knowledge, and being so well-known throughout the United States, that she saw what we do here and how well we did it. It's important for you guys to know that. My next comment, it goes back to what Kurt was talking about, with the HMPG. I think what he's trying to say, and I kind of agree with him on this, because I'm very familiar with the process coordinating the hazmat response for 30 towns. By you adopting the HMPG for this region, basically fulfills a check-in-the-box. So I would concur with Kurt by stating that you should adopt that as the plan is published on that date. That would be my recommendation. By that check-in-the-box, when the town would, when the town could apply for, i.e. generators through other state department emergency services and public protection grants, one thing that they will look at is, is that checkbox filled in? And if not, you're not, you can't get the grant. So, again, it's a formal process that all the communities have been joined in. So my recommendation is you accept the publication as dated. It may be easier for you to do that. And the last thing is that, just kind of as an FYI, and keep your ear to the ground. About 18 months ago, a committee that the mayor was talking about met, and that had to be, talking about regional communications, and I'm not going to talk about that tonight, but the committee that the mayor was talking about had to do with the potential for regionalizing communications and involving CMed. This past week, a request for proposal put out by the city of New Haven was for emergency medical communications management. We've known, we've been a participant in the CMed system in South Central Connecticut for many, many years, dates back to 1975. There's three communities right now that are separating itself from CMed, therefore, that money that they have contributed to the CMed fund will no longer be there, affects their operating budget. They no longer use the CMed system for medical communications as we know it. That stopped as of yesterday. So there's a move to replace CMed with some other mechanism, some other regional dispatch system. So I strongly urge you to keep your ear to the ground, because we are a participating town in CMed now, and as those larger communities, three of them in particular, remove themselves from the process, it will drastically affect the budget, and ultimately have an effect upon what we pay in the future, if CMed continues to exist as we know it today.
Thank you.
Chief's a tough act to follow. I just wanted to give you some feedback, because I know you're having problems with the dog situation, you know how to do it. And I had two incidents last calendar year, first time in a long time. One, all of a sudden, one afternoon, it was warm, this dog walks on our property, but you could tell he wasn't a stray dog, he had a collar, so I tied him up with enough rope and gave him some water, called the police department, and they, you know, took the information, and they were going to contact Branford, and before they could do so, the owner of the dogs called the police department. So the dispatcher put the lost dog, you know, and it was one of my neighbor's two or three houses down, and the dogs are usually caged, so I didn't even recognize the dogs. So it didn't ever get to Branford, and that was a win-win situation, an hour or so, and everything was fine. Now, the next issue was really serious, it was my neighbor Lynn to the right of me, her dog got attacked by two other dogs. Her dog was tied in her front yard, and it was a vicious attack, I mean, a gaping hole in the dog's back, it required her to run to the State Street, which is now the North Haven Hospital. But I have to say, the Branford dog people, they came, the cops came, they came rushing out, two of them in their uniforms, and they filed a report, they kept up with it, they made sure, because, you know, Lynn had already taken off with her dog, and she was quite upset. And, so I don't know, I mean, at that, but that was just a one-time bang for the buck. But would you work out some kind of plan with them? Were you charged by the call? Like, the first call, they didn't even have to get involved, it was solved quickly. I mean, I don't know what you do. $100,000 is a lot, and I agree, but at that moment, and even though it wasn't my dog, I felt they really handled the situation well. The cops made a cop report, but these people made a, you know, they, very thorough, the shots, and again, the people who, dogs attacked my neighbor's dogs came to, and, you know, they were very helpful. But they wanted to know about all the shots, just, they were very thorough, the Branford people were very thorough. And because of the severity of the injuries, you know, we didn't know what the outcome was going to be. But again, is that just one instance a year? I know you're looking for answers, and I just want to give you some input, and what do you do? You know, because I don't know what I would've done if a dog warden wasn't in town to try to help my neighbor out. And I wasn't about, I mean, all the dogs calmed down once we got them separated, but still, I wasn't really super comfortable, but I wanted to help my neighbor save the life of her dog. So with the professionalism of Branford, I have to commend them. I mean, they just took over, did this report, and again, they just wanted to know who's got what shots, and was anybody bitten, was any human bitten, you know, they were really good about it. But again, at $100,000, I got the Cadillac treatment once a year, you know, I'm like you, I'll take the Chevy treatment at 50. So I mean, if that helps you, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, it's a tough situation. And time was really critical on that second call, so. And they were there as quick as they could be, I mean, 10 minutes, so I don't know how to tell you what to do, but I wanted to have a little input. And again, at the parade Monday, as the fire department walks by, I think everybody should clap and applaud them a little more than they do. These guys, like you, draw a zero paycheck, and how many meals have they missed, you know, and what they go through sometimes has got to be traumatic. I mean, I'm sure that that accident was not a pretty sight, and, you know, it's not something you're going to leave you right away. So again, I want to thank them all, and I think they do a hell of a job in this town, and this whole town is still family, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Anyone else?
We have an executive session.
All right. Yeah, we did.
We have moved to adjourn to executive session, including the town manager and the town attorney.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.